Good evening, we'll call the meeting to order. If you'd all please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. Shaun, will you please call roll?
Deputy Mayor Baggett?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember DeCoursey?
Here.
Councilmember Holman?
Here.
Councilmember Pelosi?
Present.
Councilmember Trump Manuel?
[laughing].
Councilmember Wells?
Here, present.
All right, we will move on to proclamations. We have one proclamation this week, down a few from two weeks ago when I think we had five or six. So I'll move over to the podium. And tonight's proclamation is for Financial Literacy Week, and we have at least two Auburn Mountain View High School DECA students here. I know we have Elizabeth Enns, and is it Ariana Martinez? Come on up. No Mr. Enns tonight, the DECA teacher?
No, he couldn't make it today.
All right, we'll give him a bad time.
Yeah, we'll give him a big bad time.
All right, so you're here for Financial Literacy Week. So after I read the proclamation, I'll ask the two of you if you have any words to say about it, okay?
All right.
All right. Whereas in America today, 77% of Americans are living paycheck to paycheck. And whereas when our citizens improve their financial literacy, they will be better equipped to effectively manage their finances in an increasingly complex financial world. And whereas national research continues to highlight points of concern for how Americans manage personal debt, retirement savings, and daily budgetary challenges. And whereas it is important for both adults and our youth to demonstrate proficiency in personal financial management. And whereas while our government is taking decisive action to promote financial stability, we ultimately depend on our willingness as individuals to empower ourselves and our families with financial knowledge. And whereas the designation of Financial Literacy Week helps raise public awareness about the importance of financial education in Auburn, now therefore I Nancy Backus, mayor of Auburn, do hereby proclaim October 14th through the 20th, 2018, as Financial Literacy Week in the city of Auburn and encourage all citizens of Auburn to observe this week with programs and activities to promote their understanding of financial principles and practices. Enns, I will give that to you.
Thank you.
And if the two of you ladies would have anything to say?
Um, we do, we have a little bit. We first want to thank Nancy and the rest of the board of City of Auburn. We are so excited about this. We've been working on this platform for about three years now. We realize how important this issue is because, as she said, 77% of Americans are living paycheck to paycheck. And today, I actually checked, the census went up, and it's now 81% of millennials are considered in debt on our living paycheck to paycheck. So we see this as a really important issue, and we've been working really hard for the past three years in creating different techniques and activities to implement into classrooms and for students to be using. We're so excited, we're really excited that this will help us push our project even more forward with our DECA project, and we just want to thank Nancy and the rest of the board so much.
Thank you. Do you have anything else that you wanted to say? No? All right, well with that, thank you ladies for your interest in this and for encouraging financial literacy, and if you would go forward and accept the appreciation of council. Thank you. [applause]. Are you Carson?
Yes.
Hi Carson, welcome.
Yes, you are.
Please go forward and...
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much, how are you?
So Carson Clementson as well.
How are you?
If you could go all the way through.
Yeah, so it could be snated.
Okay, did you go all the...
I will write it.
Okay.
You're wondering if you could...
Yes, of course, Carson said he has something...
Do you have something? Thank you for giving us your time.
Go ahead, over by the microphone.
Okay. Thank you guys for giving...
Just lean into it, it'll pick it up.
Thank you guys for giving us our time. I'm sorry I'm late, I just came from football practice. We're competing for a league championship this week. So, thank you, and thank you guys for allowing us to have Financial Literacy Week.
All right, thank you. So we'll take a photo with...
Thank you. You guys could go with... Sorry, you're ready. You ran in, didn't you? [inaudible] Sometimes it's easier because that way we can get everybody in a tighter, in a tighter spot. Oh, I'm in a tight spot. [laughing]. Where the tight spot? Thank you, thank you. We're rubbing against the microphone.
Shaun, I don't believe we have any agenda modifications this evening. We will move to public hearings. Tonight we have a public hearing on the 2019-2020 Preliminary Biennial Budget. City Council to conduct a public hearing to receive public comments and suggestions with regard to the 2019-2020 Preliminary Biennial Budget, and I believe Finance Director Coleman has a presentation she would like to make before we open the public hearing.
Thank you, Your Honor, council. Thank you for listening to our budget. You can't hear it enough. We have been with the budget for, since March, we've been working on the budget. So it's, I need to get it going here. It's under Agenda... I can't walk and click, or talk and click at the same time. Let's see. There we go. I found it. Okay. As I said, we've been working on the budget since March. We started with the council retreat in March, and staff has been working on this since May, and council has been working on this since June. And so here's where we are in the process right now. We're at the public hearing, whoops, we're at public hearing number one, October 15th, us tonight, but you can see where we've been. Our first workshop with council is on June 1st, and then we met again in August over three meeting dates to cover this budget in depth and detail. Prior to that, the directors along with city staff met and went over the budget before it was presented to the council for their consideration and review. How do we get to a budget? What goes into making this budget? First of all, there's a mission statement, and the mission statement that this council has provided us is to provide a service-oriented government that meets the needs of our residents, citizens, and business community. And the vision statement is a premier, your premier community with vibrant opportunities. We've also identified core values in the city, and these stem from the comprehensive plan that was completed in December of 2015. And from these core values, we have developed budget, citywide budget goals that center on safety, thriving local economy, responsible government, celebrate livable community, and infrastructure. And everything that we do, we put into this budget, ties up to one of these goals, which are based on our core values, the vision and mission statements. So that's how we got here, in a nutshell. The key issues affecting now into the budget, affecting the 2019-2020 budget are including the ability for the city to maintain our current service levels, ensure that all new programs are aligned with the mayor and council's priorities in providing adequate fund balances and reserves. The highlights are, and I don't know if these are highlights or lowlights, but the sales tax revenue growth is projected at an average of 3.3% per year. It could be more, it could be less, we're estimating. We've gone from flat revenue growth to, this year we're up 5%, but we've come off of 1% and 1.5% growth in the previous years before this year. Property tax growth is now limited to 1% plus new construction, and 1% is about $215,000 more dollars a year. That's not a lot of money in a city where our costs are increasing far greater than 1% with labor contracts, benefits for those employees, as well as just the cost of our services that we have. And we're also losing two significant general fund resources, revenue sources, and one is the annexation sales tax credit that the city enjoyed for 10 years after the annexation, as well as the state is sunsetting the mitigation payments that were committed to this city to continue based upon the streamlined sales tax legislation that's been in effect since 2008, and now the state is pulling back and not willing to fund that any longer. Those two revenue sources are about $2 million each, that's $4 million to the general fund, which is about 5% of the general fund budget. And the demand for services, as I mentioned, is increasing. Public safety, human services, transportation, it's increasing far greater than the 3.5% in sales tax revenue and the 1% in property tax growth. And we are up with our police contract at the end of this year and Teamsters at the end of 2019. Summary of our revenues by type, this is citywide, all funds. You can see our charges for services is our largest revenue type. That is primarily our, well, primarily, it is our utilities and our internal service funds that we have. The internal service funds, to remind you, are our equipment, it's our computers, it's our facilities, and all the departments pay into these internal service providers for the services they provide to maintain our vehicles, computers, and our facilities. The other one is taxes. Most of that goes into the general fund, some does go into capital. The general fund revenues, as you can see, it is a tax-supported fund. We do have a few other revenues in there, charges for services, some intergovernmental, and you see the decrease in intergovernmental, and that is related to those revenue losses that I aforementioned. And here you can see is a general fund revenue trend, where we have the taxes, again, the largest revenue source, fees, and the large other in 2020 is a transfer in from our savings account or our reserve fund to help fund 2020 general fund. The property tax levy, we have some preliminary numbers. They're telling us in 2019 are estimated at this point, as of today, is $11.3 billion. That's a 7.3% increase over the value of last year. The levy is going to be about $22 million, and the levy rate will be $1.94. As we move into 2020, the estimated assessed valuation is $12.3 billion. I know it's a little bit different than our budget book, but this is based upon the average of 2016, 17, 18, and 19. So it could be less, it could be more. The levy rate will be in 2020 approximately $1.83, should the assessed value come in at what it's predicted to. I would like to mention on new construction, if we get about $250 million in new construction added, we can probably plan on getting somewhere around $225,000 to $250,000 a year for that. And again, we're limited to 1% levy increase from here on. Where do our property tax dollars go? As you can see, the schools take approximately 58% of that levy, and this is based upon 2018. We don't have the 2019, won't have those till probably late January, early February. But 14 cents of every dollar our citizens pay in property tax come to the city. The rest go to other jurisdictions. The others include the fire district, the library district, the flood district, and other, port district, and other junior taxing districts. And then sales tax, nine cents, it's actually eight and a half cents, but it rounds up to nine cents, comes to the city of every dollar that is spent. Expenditures by fund type, you can see that general fund and enterprise funds are our large expenditure activities that we have. We have, in the special revenue funds, that's primarily our streets, we have three special revenue street funds. And again, another one is the internal service fund over there, and that's where we're paying, the departments are paying ourselves to help maintain services to our departments. And the general fund expenditures, as you can see here, about 60% of the, this is just general fund, not all the other 30-some funds that the city has, but 60% is salaries and wages. Services and charges, those are outside services to, like our ValleyCom 911, our King County District Court services, or any other services that the city pays for. By department, the police, of course, is the largest bite to the general fund, just by the nature of their work, and public safety is one of our, is our primary function. I know I'm going through these pretty fast. And the capital budget, this is new this year, we've broken the budget out into an operating budget and a capital budget. There is a typo on this slide, it's actually 62 million, not 52 million, but you can see how it lays out, and over, this is over the two years, and the different funds that have capital projects. Streets is about a third, the three street funds here, and water and general municipal. And program improvements, these are the program improvements that have been identified and moved forward as program improvement is a program expansion, if you will. Some of them are ongoing, and some of them all the, one time, some are one time, like we need a new roof on the city hall, we need some HVAC upgrades throughout the city, and we have the city's streetlight retrofit program, that is a one time. And then we have some ongoing for some new FTEs, this is throughout all funds, not just the general fund, the homeless response. And that is the end of the presentation, so.
Okay. Councilmember Pelosi, I believe you had a question?
Thank you, Mayor.
Hi. Bring it on.
[laughing]. We had a robust study session last Monday on this topic, and, but now that you've put some of this information on slides, if you would go to slide 13.
There we go.
Okay. The levy rate, starting at $2.05, and it descends to $1.83. Then the assessed, looking also at the assessed value column, 8.8 billion down to 12.3 billion. What's moving, what's moving the levy rate down?
What moves the levy rate down, it's, has to do with assessed value and the dollars levied, and we're limited to the number of dollars that we can levy to 1%. And so when assessed value grows greater than 1%, like 8.4% or 7.3%, that means that we have a greater tax base, assessed value, to levy those dollars again, so that drives down the rate per thousand.
It's an inverse relationship between the growth versus what we can levy.
Yeah.
The assessed value doesn't really predicate what the levy rate's going to be or how much we levy. Well, predicates what the levy rate will be based upon what we levy. And as the assessed value goes up, the levy rate goes down. And as assessed value goes down, the levy rate goes up. And that happened in 2010 and 11, with a levy rate per thousand increase because we lost a considerable amount of assessed value, we lost 200 million, no, 2 billion, I'm sorry, 2 billion of assessed value.
So the third bullet covers that.
Okay.
Right? The third bullet addresses that decrease?
The 1% levy increases in 2019 and '20 are the reason that the levy rate's going down because assessed value's going up greater than 1%.
If it was just a 1% growth, the levy rate would remain the same.
Right.
Yeah. I have a couple more, Mayor, but other people may want to...
Other councilmembers have any questions? Okay, Councilmember Pelosi?
Yeah, slide 18. Looking over at salaries and wages column, far left, you mentioned 60%. Where do you get the 60% on salaries and wages?
Well, our general fund budget in 2019 is 75 million, and in 2020 is 81 million. 40% of those two numbers is how much we have budgeted for salaries. 20% of those numbers is what's been budgeted for benefits. And so together, added together, that's 60% of the $75 million budget and the $81 million budget.
Okay, and then if you look at slide 23. This is engineering, Ingrid. City's streetlight LED retrofit. Now, we did retrofits, LEDs, I don't know, eight years ago, 10 years ago. Now, is this a different lighting system than...
Yeah, so this would be for our streetlights as opposed to our traffic signal lights. So the LED retrofit before was the traffic signals.
Okay. Thank you, Ingrid, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions? Councilmember Wells?
So this is the, this is the document?
Yes. 416 pages.
Your microphone, please.
This is directed to you and to Dana. You brought to our attention, possibly Yolanda and I, that the human services stuff was going to be moved over into community development. But as you look at this document, and you look at the proposed staffing sheets and goals, that transition hasn't, hasn't been made yet. So are you going to make those transitions and changes before we do the final approval?
I don't believe the intent is to do that because the changes are going to take place in 2019, but as of the time of the preparation and approval of this document, it would still be 2018. But those changes, we are proposing to make the change to move human services over to community development.
And if we get the information on time, and depending on what our deadline is to get the final budget out, we have to get it to Government Finance Officers Association, we may be able to make those in the final document, depending on how extensive they are, may.
Okay, Councilmember Wells?
How much time, lead time do you need?
Well, the more the better, but...
So a lot of it has to be changed within the system as far as the budgeting codes, the line item codes, so.
Yeah, we're not, we need to identify what's moving and the costs, and we have to realign those, and it goes through the whole budget document then.
Councilmember Trump Manuel?
So with that said, then is this committee going to merge into community?
It's not a committee, so the Human Services Division would be moving over underneath community development as opposed to being under administration. Councilmember Wells?
Thank you, I appreciate your patience. So I guess our question is, if it's going to be moving possibly over to that other area, should the topics that are normally covered by human services be added to one of the other major committees on the matrix?
So I don't know that that's a budget question, that can be discussed later. Right now, it's still, human services is under administration, and human services remains under the matrix that council has approved, so I'm not sure...
Are you referring to the special focus area?
Yeah.
And that, would that not be a council decision amongst the council if you want to change your special focus area things?
Right.
Yeah?
Councilmember Wells?
I want to apologize, we were told a couple of weeks ago that we were now working with Jeff Tate, and so we just figured the pieces were in place. So we do not want to push things before their time is right.
No, Jeff, community development has not taken over human services. That is still a plan to be in place in 2019, not right now.
Okay, great.
And we have, Jeff and I will work together, kind of as the year winds down, as the transition happens, but as far as what the city council chooses to do with the special focus area, that is entirely your decision, we're not proposing any changes to that.
And I apologize, Mayor, I thought you were saying in 2018. It would be very, if we're doing it in 2019, we have to have the budget document out the door by late February. It would be hard to have all that worked out and also incorporated into the final budget document in less than eight weeks. It has to go to the printer, lead times and things like that.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, any other questions for Shelley? All right, hearing done, we will open the public hearing for the 2019-2020 Preliminary Biennial Budget. Is there anyone that would like to speak to the budget topic? Anyone at all on the budget topic?
I'll get out of here.
Okay? If you do, please come forward, give your name and address for the record, and limit comments to three minutes, please.
Get out of your way. There you go, sir.
Yes, Mayor Backus and councilwoman and staff would like to say thank you for all the hard work you do on putting that budget together.
Mr. Zimmerman, we need your name and address for the record.
Pardon me?
We need your name and address for the record first.
Oh, I'm sorry. Bob Zimmerman, 3302946 Place South. There's two items on the budget that I think could be addressed. Number one would be the sound system. I'm hard of hearing, and I can't hear a word you guys say most of the time, and I've asked other people in the audience at times, is it just me because I can't hear, or is it difficult? And they say, well, it's pretty difficult for us too. So there's probably something that should be addressed eventually. The other item is that you guys are all well aware of the issues I've been bringing up with the building department for nearly a decade, and those items have a serious possibility of having a serious impact on this city. Now, it's sad to say that the most encouraging response I have seen to any of those issues I've brought up is the success of the attorneys up at Oso.
Mr. Zimmerman, may I ask what part of the budget that you are referring to?
Well, I'm explaining where I'm going. So anyway, the bottom line is that this, this impact, there was 43 people killed up there, and so far, there has been $71 million awarded to those victims for loss of life and safety stuff, property loss and injuries. And that certainly has the negligence that I have witnessed in this, what I... certainly has the negligence that I have witnessed in this, what I've been dealing with up here on the hill, West Hill, has certainly impacted this city in a big way. Because if you're held negligent the same way the state was, I hope you can understand what issue I'm bringing up is. Because the city is certainly negligent. And when they deny the existence of the code, you're certainly negligent. And they've been doing it for years. And they're continuing to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the budget? Anyone else that would like to speak to our 2019-2020 preliminary biennial budget? Hearing none, I will... Ma'am, did you want to speak to the budget?
I want to add one, yeah. One question. My name is Pauline Caldwell. My address is 1128 St. Northeast here in Auburn. A few years ago, quite a few, we had on the ballot that about being able to get taxation or get the monies from these casinos and your lottery tickets and a whole bit. And I voted for it because it was supposed to help the schools. And then I'm finding that the schools are still going broke. And what I'm really concerned about is why did you guys, not you personally, but why was this monies that was to go to the schools to help them out put in the general fund?
So ma'am, we're talking about the city of Auburn's 2019-2020 biennial budget. If your comments or questions have to do with our budget, then this is the appropriate place. If it doesn't have to do with our budget, then it would probably be more appropriate during the open public comment period.
Okay. Well, do you guys don't get any parts of that money?
No, ma'am. If that's for schools, the school district and the city's budgets are completely separate.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the budget? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing and we will move to audience participation. This is the place on the agenda where the public is invited to speak to the city council on any issue. Those wishing to speak are reminded to sign in on the form provided. Please remember to give your name and address for the record and limit comments to three minutes. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Please come forward, give your name and address for the record.
Okay, try it again. My name is Pauline Caldwell. My address is 1128 St. Northeast here in Auburn. I have been, well luckily, this is the second time I've come to one of your meetings. I've gone to those in Kent, the councilman meetings and all. But this is only the second time that I've been here. And unfortunately, I'm coming at a time when I'm learning a lot about this budget that you guys are talking about. But what I was initially coming for was to talk about the situations with the seniors that are coming up next year. I have written to our representatives, to our senators, I've sent letters, I've emailed, and I've gotten no response. I've tried Wrecker, I've tried Catwell, no, what is his name? Faid, Van, Van, F-A-I-D, yeah.
Senator Faid.
I've even talked to them. I've gone to meetings where I've been in the presence of Van and Hargrove. And I've brought this up about the discussions about the seniors and our situation. I'm now understanding that there's not very much that you guys can do because this is a federal situation. But what I was hoping is that there would be a larger audience of seniors that would be able to hear my plea than what I'm anticipating doing. To get down to the bottom of it is that I'm very upset with the taxation that's going to really hurt the seniors in this country, all 50 states. I went to Olympia this morning and I was in the governor's office, but I was unable to talk to the governor concerning this. But I did get some help from one of his helpers and I intend to go forward with it. The bottom line is that we, without that medical deduction on the taxations for the seniors, we are going to be really put in hardship. And I know that more likely a lot of you will not agree, especially since I'm hearing the problems with taxations and all this, what's going on. But I intend to, and I'm giving full warning, and I know I'm only one person now, but I intend to try to get the word out to the 50 states to all seniors, which according to the 2010 census, there was over 4.1 million of us, so it's a lot more now, that if you file your taxes and find that you have to pay, just walk away. Therefore, I realize that that might hinder you guys because you're having troubles with taxes as it is. But we seniors really do outnumber a lot of folks. And I'm thinking that if I get busy now trying to get the word out to our seniors that, and because I know that more likely I will have to pay, and it's not going to happen. So I try to reach out to people and ask for help and this and that, and my representatives don't contact me. So I guess I have to go to the people. And I will spend, hopefully, before the election.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Please come forward, give your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Bob Zimmerman, 3302946 Place South. I'd like to speak about a comment that the mayor had in her weekly update here, I don't know, sometime last month. The comment was that for knowledge, to become wisdom, you have to act on that knowledge. And it was from emergency preparedness people. And there was something about, you know, 60% of the people don't do anything with emergency preparedness. And that was kind of, I thought, quite ironic to see that statement there because that's the same thing I have been trying to get across for nearly a decade. Okay? And to illustrate how silly this knowledge denial is that I have been facing, you know, they said that, you know, you don't have to have any footing or foundation underneath the concrete wall. Now, there's an archaeological site over in southern Turkey called Gobli Tepe, I believe. And at that site, it has aged to 12,000 to 14,000 years ago, before mankind was supposed to be able to have the division of labor to even accomplish something like that. And they have the people, they were just hunters and gatherers and could support the people that were building the thing. And when you look at a picture of this thing and some of their uprights there, they have blocks laying there. Those ancient people were using footings underneath that before they were even able to write or we had the wheel. Okay? I mean, and now here we are in the 21st century. We've got, the building department is denying the city code, the building code, which is adopted by the city. And, I mean, this is just so asinine. It's just beyond, just beyond comprehension. But, and if you point out, you know, with what they're doing is not correct, you know, you can quote code and they just ignore it. So anyway, I would think it would be prudent if the mayor could appoint a committee, you know, something like a hazard mitigation committee and risk abatement. And they could hear, you know, I'm sure there's plenty of people in this town that really know and have expertise in these areas and gas fires and hazardous stuff that they're denying, the city denies that is a risk. And this kind of goes into this, all these risks that the city accepts kind of tie into what I was talking about a few minutes ago under the budget. And, you know, because the city's going to be liable for this negligence, I believe, at some point in the future. Anyway, thank you. My time's up for the day.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? All right, seeing none, we will move on to council ad hoc committee reports. Council ad hoc committee chairs may report on the status of their ad hoc council committee's progress on assigned tasks and may give their recommendation to the city council if any. We will first go to Councilmember Brown for the finance committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is the finance committee's October 15, 2018 report. On claims vouchers, we reviewed 231 claims vouchers and two wire transfers from the voucher report dated 10/10/2018 for a total amount of $6 million. Among the many bills was an interesting claim for $1,500 to an Auburn buy local advertising campaign. These funds were originally collected from the Auburn Business Improvement Association, BIA. All claims were reviewed and in good order. The payroll vouchers were also reviewed. Payroll vouchers from 9/27/2018 to 10/10/2018 were reviewed. There were 16 checks, 538 direct deposits, and eight associated electronic funds transfers for tax, retirement, et cetera. The total for all the payroll expenditures was $2,148,000. The finance committee recommends approval of this report.
Thank you. And Councilmember DeCoursey for the roads ad hoc committee.
Thank you, Mayor. The ad hoc committee, Councilmember Troutman and Deputy Mayor Baggett and myself, met this evening with Directors Coleman and Galb. This is our second to last meeting in preparing our presentation for the October 29 study session. So we will meet one more time next week to finish the presentation and be ready for the council presentation at the study session on the 29th. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered by the city council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. Do we have a motion? Deputy Mayor Baggett?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Councilmember Brown?
Second, Your Honor.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Baggett?
Thank you. We have six items on the consent agenda tonight. The minutes of the September 24, 2018 city council study session, the minutes of the October 1, 2018 regular council meeting, the claims vouchers and the payroll vouchers just explained by Councilmember Brown, and the call for the public hearing on the preliminary 2019-2020 biennial budget, which you just heard. The call for the public hearing on the 2019 CDBG annual action plan.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments? Councilmember Pelosi?
Thank you, Mayor. Several months ago, I asked about the status of past minutes. And I haven't seen a report recently, but are we all up to date now on our minutes?
We are not. I believe I have two sets less for 2016, three or four sets for 2017, and most of 2017 is still outstanding. It's something that, at this point, we have worked with, creating a contract with Danny, who is recently retired, to complete the 2017 minutes in the next four months. And then I will have the 2000, I'm sorry, yes, the 2018 minutes done by as soon as possible, the ones that are outstanding.
So we don't have a schedule on...
The next four months.
Four months?
In the next four months, they'll be completed.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes. All right, we will move on to ordinances. Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 6695, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Auburn, Washington, directing the revision of city ordinances and regulations to use non-gendered pronouns and amending section 1.04.020 of the Auburn City Code.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Holman?
Yes, I move to adopt ordinance number 6695.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Councilmember Troutman.
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman?
This move to modernize the language in our city literature is at minimal cost to accomplish, and it will better represent the equity we strive to achieve. It will change things like chairman becomes chair or chairperson, craftsman to craft people, man-made to human-made, and so on, to put our codes and such, operating procedures into a language that's more appropriate for today's times.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Councilmember Pelosi, did you have a...
No.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. Okay, just wanted to make sure. All right, hearing none. All those in favor of ordinance number 6695, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes.
Resolution number 5384, a resolution of the city council of the city of Auburn, Washington, declaring certain real property a surplus and authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a purchase and sale agreement between the city of Auburn and Pape Properties Incorporated.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Councilmember Holman?
I move for the adoption of resolution number 5384.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Deputy Mayor Baggett?
Second that, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman?
Resolution 5384 is to declare surplus, some city-owned property, it's located at 302 Lund Road Southwest, and begin negotiations for the sale of said property. The property was acquired in 2000, well, yeah, 2006 for $180,000 from King County, and it will be sold for no less than that. So there's no loss to the city and it's of no use to the city. So this other company is interested in making this part of an assemblage. So hopefully, this will result in a little bit of money to our budget and some future business going in there.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of resolution number 5384, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes.
Resolution number 5385, a resolution of the city council of the city of Auburn, Washington, setting a hearing date in relation to amending the 2019-2024 Transportation Improvement Program of the city of Auburn pursuant to chapter 35.77 of the Revised Code of Washington.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Councilmember DeCoursey?
I move for the adoption of resolution 5385.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Councilmember Troutman?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Councilmember DeCoursey?
Thank you, Mayor. As our city attorney mentioned, this resolution is to set a date for the 2019-2024 Six-Year Transportation Improvement Plan, which we commonly refer to as the TIP. The public hearing is proposed to be held November 5, 2018 during the city council meeting. The change that was made for this request also includes the addition of a project called, TIP number I-15, which is the 10th Street Northwest and East Street Northwest intersection improvements. And the project will design and construct a new traffic signal at that intersection.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of resolution number 5385, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. Passes. All right, we have come to the end of the business portion of our meeting, so we will move to mayor and council member reports. At this time, the mayor and city council may report on significant items associated with their appointed positions on federal, state, regional, and local organizations. And we will first hear from Deputy Mayor Baggett.
Thank you, Your Honor. On October 10, I attended the Emergency Management Advisory Committee for King County. And there was priorities in a couple of areas. Some will be eventually available for us to review locally here within our city. Jody Miller, who is the interim director of the Office of Emergency Management for King County, is drafting, her staffer drafting, a handbook which will be available at our next drafting, her staffer drafting, a handbook, which will be available at our next meeting, which I will bring back to the city and share with our emergency management team. And basically, it repeats the heavy emphasis on community and regional awareness and involvement and training. Again, I have emphasized in the past relative to emergency management, the need to make people aware, and I should say conscious awareness, because there are many disasters and situations out there that can face our city and our region that we need to be very mindful of. And they come in different forms. One of the things that they're looking at right now is long-term power outages, which might be caused by solar flares, things of that nature, which a lot of people are not really in tune with, but perhaps they should be because of the catastrophic situation that could exist if one of these major flares affected our particular region. Power systems, spacecraft operations, and other systems, which are electronic in nature. But a lot of the other things that they also covered in there, priority-wise, is shelters for the mass care of individuals that would be suffering from such a disaster or emergency situation. So, again, stay tuned. We'll probably have more reports after the next meeting next month. And we'll continue on with our emphasis on getting awareness to our people and first responders, who are doing one heck of a job out there. And that's your fire people, your police people, and all of the people here within the staff that handles emergency management. Thank you.
Thank you. And let's not forget our 911 dispatch as well.
Absolutely. Our Valleycom and all of the people over there that work diligently day and night for your 911 and all your emergency calls.
Excellent. Thank you. Councilmember Pelosi? We've been waiting too, Councilmember Pelosi.
I have some interesting information on solid waste and water pollution.
We have been waiting to hear about solid waste and water pollution for several months, Councilmember Pelosi. It's good to have you back.
All right, thank you. The Metropolitan Solid Waste Management Advisory Committee, which I'm a member, and I represent the city of Auburn, and I have now for several years, we're dealing with updating the comprehensive plan on how we operate with the other 37 member cities. And six cities have supported the comp plan in writing, and that includes the city of Auburn. They have a recycling task force, and one of our supervisory members, Joan Nelson, is a member of that committee. So, we are represented in that facet as well. Recycling task force is looking at the recy, the blue recycling bins throughout the city. Things that we have to watch out for is don't leave the lid open. They like to have them, Waste Management likes to have them, and the other hauler?
Republic.
Republic. They like, they like the contents to be fairly dry. So, we want to keep them clean and dry. We want to reduce contamination within the recycling bin. Look, look on the outside, and it'll tell you what should go in the recycling bin and what should not go in the recycling bin. And then, recycling, the market for the haulers is, it has to have a good market out there. If they don't have a good market to sell this recycling material to, that creates a problem for them. And we also talked about shredded paper. We're looking, and plastic bags. Should they go in the bins, or shouldn't they go in the bins? We're reviewing that, and we'll have more information on that later. Also, there's a big movement out at Cedar Hills Landfill. There's one section there, and they call these different sections cells, C-E-L-L-S, for lack of a better word, I guess. There is one that they're preparing now to expand the Cedar Hills Landfill. It's an 18-acre piece of property. So, they dig way down, and they put in liners, and it's quite an extensive operation. So, that will be forthcoming. And our favorite, South King County Transfer Station, city of Algonah. They're starting, well, they have equipment now. They're cleaning out the hill to widen everything out. And now, they'll, at the end of the year, they'll start their design stages. And they plan to open in 2023. And there's an open house planned for this December. So, I'll keep everybody informed on that. Also, they had a public, they have a public comment, period. Two residents spoke against the landfill. Odor, eagles carrying garbage out of the landfill, and other birds, and they dropped the residue on the residential properties. That could be very annoying. And so, that's the end of that report. Now, I go to?
But wait, there's more.
Now, we go to the Metropolitan Water Pollution Advisory Committee. And you're on the Regional Water Quality Committee, RWQC. So, you will hear a lot of this stuff as well. The committee did a kickoff of a workshop on a draft regional sewer contract. And that will initiate a new operating board. They're going to change the layout of the current committee that I'm on, that I spoke about. They call it the acronym MUPAC. So, that solid waste board will come out with some new things. And the overall schedule is to, their goal is to have a new board complete next year. And there will be a second workshop in November of this year, which I will be attending. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Trout Manuel?
Yeah, thank you. On October 4 was my DVE Domestic Violence Task Force in Renton. And I have to say, this was the first time that I have missed my committee meeting due to illness in the past four and a half years. So, I felt horrible not being able to go to it. I did get an email from one of the members saying, "I hope you're feeling okay because you've never missed a meeting." So, that was nice that they acknowledged that. Then, on October 5, I went to the Junior Achievement Walmart Ribbon Cutting. That was really, really interesting, to see how they're teaching and training our youth how to run a city, how to run their businesses. I met their little mayor, little chunky, little young man, very happy and jolly. And I asked, I asked him questions about, "So, what's your, what's your day look like today?" And he picks up this agenda, and all these meetings, and all these things that he had to go to. And he takes his job very serious. Met some of the city council members. I asked them questions, and they were a little bashful. So, they just showed me their agenda. But it was really nice to see. Then, I went over to the other side, where they had probably like about 30 students on the ground, sitting there, like, you know, with their legs folded. And they were, the lady that was up front teaching them was asking them, "How many are married in this, in this room?" And you'd see half of the classroom raising their hands. And then, they said, "How many have twins in a family?" And only three out of that whole group had twins. And the whole idea about their, their training is how to budget, how to budget their money. And they went by how much, two, I think it was $20,000 to $100,000,000. And these kids all had a role and a part on how to budget, who was low-income. So, it was really fascinating to see these kids. But the only sad thing about this, when I, when I talked to some of the people that were there, the CEOs and stuff, is that the school district, they would like to see the school district take more part in bringing their children, the youth, to this because that's what they're there for. And I guess our schools district right now, due to fundings and the trip, taking kids on the bus and stuff, is something that I need to talk to our superintendent and see, you know, how they're going to work this field trips in our schools, to be able to have our kids, to be able to take advantage of this. But overall, it was very well-attended by a lot of Walmart CEOs and managers, and local businesses were there. And so, I found it very interesting. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So, that fits right into the Financial Literacy Week that our Auburn Mountain View students were here for tonight. Thank you. Councilmember Wales?
Thank you, Your Honor. Today, at 3 o'clock, it was announced that we lost one of our Renaissance men. At age 65, Paul Allen died today. And he was truly a Renaissance man. I wrote down some of the things that he's taken active, active leadership in, not only with his ideas and technology, but with his money. Foremost, maybe sports, and the arts, nonprofit groups, numerous communities. And the other one that I thought of was medical research. And it's something that we need to reflect on, because all of us, in our own little way, can give to our community and to our nation. And I think the people at this table do that. And this is the loss of a great man at 65. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Holman?
No report, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would just report that on October 2, I participated in the Left Ward Deliberations, which the city helps administer benefits for retired city employees. And I would just, you know, remind everyone that you're either retired or you want to be at some point. And so, it's very important, and I'm proud that the city takes care of their retired former employees. But I also wanted to mention, looking through the Auburn Reporter, and recognize my fellow councilmember Claude Decorse. And he inspires me in that he just recently received his Advanced Certificate of Municipal Leadership from the Association of Washington Cities. The certificate in, of municipal leadership program recognizes city officials who have received training in the roles and responsibilities, legal requirements, public sector, resource management, community planning and development, and effective local leadership. So, I want to congratulate my fellow city council member and thank him for providing that leadership.
Very nice. And congratulations, Councilmember Decorse. That is quite an accomplishment.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Hearing your story in print like that is a little bit humbling. We all do our part, and we've all been part of that. You know, Councilmember Pelosi, with his National League of Cities Board membership and other things he's done around the community for 14 years, a lot of accolades there for kind of leading the way for all of us to kind of take, take a role in that as well. So, but thank you. It's, it's very nice to be able to participate and, and do those things. So, speaking of reports, on October 2, I attended a follow-up meeting for the Affordable Housing Advisory Board. We met on September 19 to review our final draft of our legislative agenda. And we met on October 2 to finalize that agenda. That was also during the Housing Washington Conference that was held in Tacoma this year, from October 2 and October 4. The legislative agenda for the Affordable Housing Advisory Board, and this is in no particular order, includes items such as enacting the Condominium Liability Reform Act, increasing the Housing Trust Fund. Housing Trust Fund is the fund that's used through the Department of Commerce to fund affordable housing projects. And last year, over the years, the ask for the Housing Trust Fund has been $200 million. Last year, the legislature provided $110.2 million. So, far short of what the ask is. Affordable Housing Advisory Board kind of went back and forth a little bit about a number. And originally, we're looking at a number of about $400 million, which is different than the Association of Washington Cities number, $200 million. But at the end, we looked at it as, we really don't, shouldn't put a number on this. What we should do is look at what the need is and what's in the pipeline and fund those projects. So, we'll be going back to the legislature this next session to look at fully funding projects that are in the pipeline and those that are planned to be constructed in the next year or year and a half. The other items included supporting strategies to prevent homelessness, addressing issues with the application of the prevailing wage, where the prevailing wages have taken quite a jump in some respects, updating the Growth Management Act, which is high on the legislative agenda, requiring a minimum net urban density. And items also include modifying the Local Project Review Act, funding planning grants for the implementation of local affordable housing programs, incentivizing local affordable housing development and policy adoption through funding criteria, requiring affordable housing incentive programs, expanding the multifamily tax exemption, addressing timing issues related to collection of impact fees, and looking at the authorization of local sales tax programs and additional property tax programs. Each one of these items were divided amongst the Affordable Housing Advisory Board members. And the three that I've been tasked with assisting of working through the legislative process this year is the modification of the Local Project Review and procedural completeness review. This provides a more efficiency in the permitting process, the incentivization of local affordable housing development and policy. And this is going to ask the state to create an effective incentive program that meets the local housing goals and allows local jurisdictions to work a little bit better within their priorities. And then, thirdly, to address the timing issues regarding impact fees. And what's being asked for here is a revolving loan fund that could aggregate funds, loans against yet-to-be-collected funds, and manage a late-homer program to recover funds from those who benefit at a later date. And this relates to issues of timing. So, we'll be going forward with that agenda this year. And then, quickly on the Housing Washington Conference, I attended a number of sessions, but the ones I always go to are the State Legislative Roundtable, and of course, the final general session. The State Legislative Roundtable this year had three panelists, two from the 27th District, Senator Darnell, and Senator, and Representative Jenkins, and Senator O'Ban from the 28th District. A number of questions were posed to the senators and the representative related to the addressing of affordable housing issues within the state. And they've all agreed that not only is it should be a continuing issue, but a priority issue, but we need to kind of tie in other issues along with it, which we've been pushing for, which includes also the mental health issue. So, what I'm hearing is that in this legislative session, there's going to be a heavy focus once again on more attention on mental health needs and funding of those needs in the state. So, we'll see. And then, the keynote speaker for the closing session was former Secretary of Health, Henry Sinzenaro. He gave a very robust speech related to the, the issues related to the affordable housing crisis in our nation, and a lot of the issues related to pound, around the wage disparity. So, rents have increased dramatically over the years, but wages have stayed somewhat stagnant. So, as we all know, it's hard to afford a house or place to rent if you're not making a good livable wage. So, in short, that was a very good present, program, program he presented, and was able to give some insight as what's happening in his community in Texas and what he's done as a former mayor of San Antonio. And then, lastly, I wanted to state that a couple weeks ago or so, I was in Walgreens. Then lastly, I wanted to state that a couple weeks ago or so, I was in Walgreens over by Starbucks here. And I was at the checkout counter, and one of our local police officers came in and asked the clerk if there was an intercom in the store. And the clerk asked why. And the officer said, "Well, there's a vehicle parked outside that has its windows open." And the vehicle actually belonged to one of the clerks in Walgreens. So she came forward and said, "That's my vehicle." And he told her, just very politely, said, "It's an invitation for somebody to come in and do something with the vehicle." So I just wanted to say kudos to the officer, and it's nice to see our officers out there not only doing things they do in their vehicles and what they do on a daily basis, but also looking out for some little minor details, like a window open in a car in a parking lot. So thank you.
Thank you. We do have a great proactive police department, and that's all about that community policing and being out of their cars from behind the windshields. And I will echo those sentiments of a great police department. So you've heard that the council has been pretty busy for the last couple of weeks, and it's just been a busy time all in all. Couple of things that we've been attending to, on the 3rd of October, there was the first-of-the-year Coffee with a Cop over at Rail Hoppin Brewery over on Main Street, just across the street from City Hall. And it was really well-attended by not just our police officers, but by a lot of residents of the city, and many of them brought their children along as well. It's so important, as we've said so many times, that a first experience, a first interaction with a police officer be a positive one. And to have our officers being willing to take that time and meet with the public to answer questions and to just help people realize that they are just down-to-earth, good people that are doing a job taking care and keeping our city safe. It was really good to see the turnout there. And on the next evening, I, as a member of the Executive Council for the Greater Seattle Partners, which is the economic development organization for the region, we had our first meeting and then also a reception for the new CEO that was hired after a nationwide search, Brian McGowan, who comes to us from the Atlanta region. And he is already, he's met with over 140 people within the first four weeks that he's been on the job. So he is definitely out to make sure he knows who he should be working with on a regular basis and making sure that people in this region know who he is. On the 5th of October in the evening, the Auburn High School versus Auburn Mountainside homecoming game for Auburn High School. But before the game, it was a pink-out to raise money for the American Cancer Society. It was pouring down rain, and I will tell you, those students didn't care a lick about the rain. They were out there doing everything they could to raise funds to go to Relay for Life and to the American Cancer Society. So kudos to them. And while I will always cheer for all Auburn schools and sports, it was Auburn High School's homecoming game. And since I am a Trojan, I was a little proud to say that Auburn High School won their homecoming game that night. I know. And on Saturday night, we had more than you imagined, the annual fun event out at Game Farm Wilderness Park, where we do smores, of course, and Auburn Riverside High School Jazz Band and the Pacific Ballroom dancers were out to entertain. And it was a lot of fun. Good weather, great weather, as a matter of fact, for that event. It wasn't like the rain the night before for the homecoming game. And Councilmember De Corsi, there has been a lot of work recently on affordable housing. On Monday, the 8th, I attended a meeting at Puyallup City Hall that was convened by Tacoma Mayor Woodard on affordable housing for Pierce County. And the needs, as you might imagine, are no different between King and Pierce County. It's a need for affordable housing throughout our region. And so I am looking forward to continuing those conversations with the Pierce County mayors. The next day, the next morning, bright and early, after our council study session last week, 5:00 AM flight to LA to meet with Mayor Garcetti of LA to talk about homelessness in their region. LA County has 88 cities. City, or King County has 39 cities. So imagine trying to get 88 cities and a county to work together. Their homelessness issues, of course, are more significant than ours are in the Seattle region. And they weren't quite sure how to handle it, so they were working on funding, and their ballot measures had failed a couple of times. And two years ago, they passed a $3.5 billion, that's with a B, bond measure, or ballot measure, to work on homelessness for 10 years. So $350 million a year for 10 years. And I am not in any way, shape, or form saying that the Seattle region should be doing something like that. The one thing that I was interested in and very happy to hear is that they were looking at all of their funding and what they were currently doing before they ever went out for that ballot measure, something that we have touted here, that we don't ask for a single penny more until we identify that we're spending the money that we've been entrusted with in the appropriate way. What I did like about their approach is those 88 cities, they split into eight regions. And so as you've heard us say before, maybe what works for homelessness in Seattle doesn't work for Bellevue, doesn't work for Auburn. But if you can divide those cities up within regions and then have the opportunity for that funding to be overseen by each region, then you can start to impact the changes that are best for each one of our regions. And I am really hopeful for looking at that approach going forward as King County looks at a new governance model for working on homelessness issues. They also have a scorecard for their council members on the LA, City of LA, I believe they have 12 council members. And each council member had committed to 222 units of new affordable housing within their district. So there was a scorecard on their website that showed just how many each council member had had built within their district. There were three of those council members that had zero of their 222 units built over the last couple of years. And so it's an opportunity for transparency and to hold those council members accountable for what they committed to doing. Next evening was the Valley Regional Fire Authority Board of Governance meeting, and Councilmember De Corsi, Councilmember Pelosi are also on that board. And we were honored to appoint a new Fire Chief Administrator for Valley Regional Fire Authority. After 11-plus years of dedicated service to VERFA, as we call it, Administrator Eric Robertson has chose to retire at the end of the year. And so with big shoes to fill, we determined that current Deputy Chief Brent Swerengen was the appropriate person to fill that role. And so we appointed him that evening, and we look forward to working with him upcoming. He has probably 35-plus years of experience in the fire profession, and so he brings with that a wealth of knowledge and opportunities to continue moving the Valley Regional Fire Authority in the right direction. On the 11th, over at the, Masonic Hall, pardon me, over on the corner of East Main and Auburn Way South, was the annual King County Executives John D. Spelman Awards for Achievement in Historic Preservation. And really proud to have that ceremony in Auburn because we had three recipients in Auburn, so it was appropriate. So first was the award recipient, Patricia Cosgrove, in recognition of her endurance, enduring commitment to public service and dedication to the cultural heritage of Auburn and South King County. So as we get ready to say farewell to Patricia and thank her for her years of dedicated service as leading the Auburn White River Valley Museum, we were especially thrilled that she was being acknowledged for her great work on the Mary Olson Farm as well as for the White River Valley Museum. We also had the Auburn Masonic Lodge receive an award for exemplary achievement in restoration of the storefronts in the King Solomon Masonic Temple. So if you've noticed, over the course of the last couple of years, the storefronts, the bottom floors have gone back to wooden entrances. And that goes back to the origin of that building. And there are a couple of masons out of Tacoma, and it is their work to do historic preservation. And so it's appropriate that it was masons doing that preservation work, beautiful work. There is still one more doorway to be completed in the future. And then also the Tupper family for exemplary achievement in stewardship of the Tupper Barn. And it's just off of Highway 164, south of Auburn. And so we will claim them as Auburn. So it was really a very proud afternoon to be able to celebrate the recipients of those awards. And then the following day, more affordable housing up in Kirkland, meeting with Seattle Councilmember Gonzalez and Kirkland Mayor Wallen and Kenmore Mayor Baker to talk about affordable housing and how we can work better as a region to address those issues. And so, as I said, it's been a busy couple of weeks for everybody up here. I want to thank you for the work that you do on behalf of the citizens of Auburn. And Mr. City Attorney, do we have any need for an executive or closed session?
No, Your Honor.
That is great news. We are adjourned.